Good evening. Welcome to the September 28th, 2015 Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Dave Henderson lead us with the invocation, so please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful fall that you've given us. We thank you for the beautiful city that we live in and the opportunity that we have as council people to serve the people of our community. We pray that you will bless this meeting and be with us the rest of the evening. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater.
Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell. Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Mayor Protem Campbell that he would be out of the county this evening and not be able to be with us. So I will move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Protem Campbell at the regular council meeting of September 28th, 2015, due to being out of the county. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Campbell for this evening's council meeting discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Motion passes. First item on the agenda this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four presentations this evening. First is C1, A Trails and Pathways Update by Kurt Volvinseep, our Public Works Manager. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a brief update on where we're at with the Troy's and Trails, excuse me, Troy Trails and Pathways. Just a quick reminder and why we're doing the Troy Trails and Pathways because there still seems to be some questions on that and from the public is back in the 2007 through 2012 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it was number one priority by the people that participated in the survey. And then again, number one, and with the 52 percent of respondents saying that the trails and pathways are very important in the 2014-2019 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then we see it as part of the top 10 strategies that council adopted for the fiscal year 2015-16. So just a brief summary, we had the original proposed route. It was more of a passive recreation route and we hosted a public forum on August 20th. During this forum, we invited everyone that abutted the first segment, which is from Firefighters Park up to Adams and South Boulevard, which is the connection to Clinton River Trail, to the public forum by mail, by first, excuse me, by mail. During the forum, it was a bit of difficult task to quantify it, but we saw that the majority of the people that participated in the public forum were for the trails and pathways. Where we saw some concern was actually where the proposed route went. We saw some concerns that the residents, that they didn't want it behind their house or aside their house. And one of the big suggestions was to use major roads instead of going behind or aside the house. This, papers wrote about this, this opposition, and Vince Ranger, who is with Michigan Department of Transportation, who is our reviewer for the Transportation Alternative Program that we applied for on August 3rd, called and asked the city's position on its current application for the TAP grant. We talked administratively and we decided that it was in the city's best interest to keep the application in place because the proposed route that we apply for might not change. We decided that we need to have an additional public engagement. That public engagement is coming up next Monday, October 5th, at 6:30 at the Troy Community Center. We sent out over 2,400 letters to people that abut the three proposed routes. And the three proposed routes, they have kind of a different character to each. The first one is the original proposed route, which we call the recreational route. This one does go behind and aside houses and through parks and connects many of the major facilities through Troy. The second one is what we call the hybrid route. This hybrid route still used some of that passive recreation opportunity, connected some parks, but did not go behind or aside any homes that weren't already on a major road. And then we have our major road route. This was strictly using major roads, not going into any of the local or subdivision streets. We recognize that not everyone can attend a physical meeting, so the same as the August 20th public forum, with the help of Alex Bellock and the IT Department and Rob Bittner, we developed a portal where people can actually go on, learn about the trail and pathway, make comments, make suggestions, actually put a pin on the map so we know where they're located or where their concern or suggestion is. This will be active probably a week past October 5th, so, and we can start quantifying. Through this process as well, after they make their comment or suggestion, we ask them to give a preference on route. Route A, B, or C, recreation route, hybrid route, or the major road route. So it gives us a better opportunity to try to quantify what our constituents want. And again, the public forum is October 5th at 6:30 at the Troy Community Center. It's going to be more like an open house where people have an opportunity to learn what it would be to ride on either one of these trails, what the feel would be like, difference between on-road, dedicated pathway. And again, the website is troymi.gov/troytrails to learn more about this or to leave comments or suggestions on the portal.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions from council for Kurt this evening? Thank you. I've gotten a little feedback and I think it's a great idea to continue the forums, but still on the top of the list for my priorities anyways. C2 is an Economic Development Activity Update. Glenn Lapin, our Economic Development Specialist, is here with John Kotler, the Vice President of Sales for New Image Building Services, and Brian Proctor, the VP General Counsel for New World Systems. Good evening and welcome to Troy's City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members. I'd like to provide you with an update on economic development activity here in the city. We continue to see positive activity in both the office and industrial markets. According to CBRE, Troy's office vacancy rate has dropped below 20% for the first time since prior to the recession. That excludes the Kmart headquarters, is considered obsolete. In the second quarter of 2015, the office vacancy rate was 19.5%. This compares to one year ago of an office vacancy rate of 22.5%. The five-year office vacancy average is 24.5%. So you can starting to see steady declines in those vacancies, which is nice. As the vacancies go down, the office rents begin to start climbing up a little bit. Office rents, gross office rents currently are at about $18.62 per square foot, which is up from the five-year average rent of $18.29 per square foot. On the industrial side, the second quarter of 2015, the industrial vacancy rate was 3.9%, a very tight market on the industrial side. This compares to a second quarter 2014 industrial vacancy rate of 5.3% and a five-year industrial vacancy rate average of 9.5%. Industrial rents per square foot, especially at those low rates, those low vacancy rates, are at $6.50 per square foot, which is up from a five-year average rent of $5.25 per square foot. So we continue to see very positive activity. And on the map in your booklets and above you, you can see some of the recent projects that have either been under construction, completed, or taking place currently. Tonight, I'm very pleased to be able to highlight two of those projects and I'm very pleased to have John Kotler, who is Vice President of Sales for New Image Building Services, and Brian Proctor, who is Vice President and General Counsel for New World Systems. They each both have projects here. They're both expanding in the city and I'd like to have each of them tell you a little bit about their companies and kind of their project as well. So first, we'll start with John.
Thank you.
Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. New Image Building Services has been in business for over 27 years, 26 of those years in Macomb County. I've been with New Image for a year. I'm an Oakland County resident. I've been an Oakland County resident my entire adult life. I'm pleased to say right after I joined the company, they moved Mount Clemens to Troy. If any of you have experienced that drive to Mount Clemens. Most importantly, since we've come to Troy, I can attest to some of those figures. We are a commercial cleaning company. What we do is janitorial for Class A office buildings, medical. For over 20 years, we've had Troy Place, which is at Coolidge and Big Beaver. We moved in a Cumberland right across the street was BASF. Since we've come to Troy, we've captured North Troy Corporate Place, which is four office buildings right next door where his company's moving, hoping to capture his. Actually, I put in a bid for his building last week. It's a million square feet and in my business, once you capture the building and you're providing the cleaning, the more those buildings fill up, it's gravy for us. And those buildings are filling up. I mean, it's even a year ago, a short year ago, those buildings were hurting, but there's been a lot of construction, a lot of people coming in. It's been a great move for our company. As I said, since, you know, it, when I'm in sales, when I'm calling on someone in Oakland County and I just say I'm down the road here at Maple and Cumberland between Rochester and Laverne, it makes a huge difference. We already had office space on Chicago Road. We have offices in St. Joseph and we also have an international president in Qatar and Abu Dhabi. But our world headquarters, Troy, Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thank you for investing in Troy and staying in Oakland County where you should be.
All right. Evening, everyone. As was mentioned previously, I'm with New World Systems. We actually were founded in 1981 and every single one of those years, we've been in the city of Troy. We're a public sector software company. We actually have two divisions. One's a public safety division, the other is a local government division. And on the local government division side, the city of Troy is actually a client. It has been, I think, for about five years now. New World's got about 500 employees. We're investing substantially in getting more talent and bringing more talent here to the city of Troy. We're moving in November, thankfully. I will be very glad when this is done. It's a massive move for us. We're going from 55,000 square feet at the 888 West Big Beaver Building to 75,000 at 840 West Long Lake up at the corner of Long Lake and Crooks. We are the owners of that building, so we're in a unique position in that we have tenants as well. And I was mentioning previously to Glenn, we're actually going to leave an entire floor open, 31,000 square feet that I expect will occupy in the next year based on the growth. I will tell you as, we bought the building back in October of last year and we've gone through the build-out. We're actually using CBRE as our project manager. The city of Troy's been fantastic in working with the building department, the inspections, all the departments throughout the city have been wonderful as we've moved through this process, which was on a very compressed timeframe. So it's been great. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're excited about staying in Troy. We've been in Troy for a long, long time and it's worked out well for us. As we look at our 500 or so employees, it's a very centrally located area for us. We have a lot of people that are spread out throughout the United States and obviously with the amenities from a hotel standpoint, restaurants. It's been fantastic for us and we're looking for many more years in the city of Troy. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for reinvesting in the city. New World's been here as long as I've been here and you've been a great partner with the city. My son-in-law works for New World, so I have a soft spot in my heart for New World. Thank you. Thank you, John and Brian, for coming tonight. Thank you.
Just wanted to add one more item there if I could. The city of Troy continues to be preferred location for businesses of all sizes, as we can tell, and also in a wide range of industries. NerdWallet, which is a consumer advocacy website, has rated Troy the fourth-best small city in the United States to start a business. The other three cities, number one, Alpharetta, Georgia; number two, Redmond, Washington; and number three, Wilmington, Delaware; and Troy is number four. NerdWallet bases its rankings on business climate and local economic health, and Troy was cited for its excellent diversification of businesses, the presence of Automation Alley, who you'll hear from in a minute or two, as a business accelerator, and the affordability of housing as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions for Glenn? All good news, Glenn. It's always nice to see you come here and give us good news. Thank you. And thank you again, Brian and John. Thank you. Next is an LDFA update with a presentation from Mark Miller, our Director of Economic and Community Development. And with him this evening is Tom Kelly, the Chief Operating Officer with Automation Alley. Good evening to you, Tom. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of Council. I'm going to give an update on the Cities of Southfield and Troy Joint Local Development Finance Authority and Certified Technology Park, in which we completed an amended, restated, and extended development plan and tax increment financing plan. But first, I want to introduce Tom Kelly, the Chief Operating Officer of Automation Alley, who has a few comments he'd like to make.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor, Councilmembers. First, I'd like to apologize that our CEO and Executive Director, Ken Rogers, couldn't be here. His granddaughter got married in North Carolina this weekend. And for a guy that works harder than anybody I know, to not be here is killing him, but I'll do the best I can to make up for that. Just very briefly, you know, Automation Alley has had a long and exclusive history with Troy, with the city of Troy. You are our headquarters, you have always been our headquarters, except for, I guess, when Elbrook started it, out of the offices up in Waterford. But we were in top of Troy for a little while and then we built our headquarters on Bellingham. And in that 15 years, we've helped companies, all small and medium businesses, occasionally larger businesses, in defense, to get defense contracts with international business, to take them on trade missions, for talent, to help them train up their staffs with the latest technology that they need, with entrepreneurship to get businesses established. In that 15 years, we have generated hundreds of millions of dollars of new business for those entities. It's been a very successful ride in partnership with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and in no small part to where we are located in the city of Troy. It is a wonderful, wonderful place to do business and we are delighted to be here. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Okay, now the update. On August 24th, both the Cities of Southfield and Troy adopted resolutions. One was to amend the district boundaries in the city of Southfield and the second was to approve the amended, restated, and extended development plan and tax increment financing plan. And then the certified resolutions from both city clerks were then delivered to the state of Michigan and they have recognized that they have received those resolutions. Well, there's been some MEDC questions lately. You've probably heard about some of it in the news and both Tom and I attended a Smart Zone meeting in which we got some clarity. Part of the problems that have occurred is the MEDC has lost some tribal funding revenues and so therefore they're having to reduce their staffing and they're doing that through attrition and layoffs. However, at the meeting which Tom and I attended, which was specifically for Smart Zones, the MEDC affirms that the Smart Zone extensions will be reviewed by, will be reviewed for the Cities of Southfield and Troy. There are three Smart Zones that are in a different category than others, and that is Troy, Southfield with the satellite in Port Huron, Houghton Hancock with a satellite in Marquette, and then this Ann Arbor Spark with a satellite in Adrian. These three have been, already had applications submitted because we'd heard some rumblings that we were going to have to resubmit and start all over. But with that, they're in, the new state treasurer and the Steve Arwood, the relatively new MEDC director, are going to have a closer scrutiny and they may ask us for some additional information. And we don't expect the review process to be quick, maybe by the end of the year. We'll wait and have to see what happens. So what are the next steps? The next steps that will have to occur is that we're working with Automation Alley for a service agreement to sort of solidify our relationship. And then we need to execute, along with the city of Southfield, an MEDC Smart Zone amended agreement to actually implement this once our plan is approved up at the state level.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mark from council?
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Tom. Our next presentation is the City of Troy Employees Retirement System, 51st Annual Actuarial Evaluation, the City of Troy Initiative Plan for Volunteer Firefighters, 35th Annual Actuarial Valuation, and of course, the City of Troy Retiree Healthcare Plan Actuarial Valuation of Other Post-Employee Benefits. And nobody is more excited than Tom Dowling, the Director of Finances, to make this type of a presentation.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I think the title's going to be longer than my presentation, but I'll try and make this as painless as possible if we can. I won't go into great details, but let's just start off with, we do have an annual evaluation conducted by our actuaries, which is really an estimate of what we believe our pension obligations are out there and how we're funded against those obligations. As you can see, we're required to have our evaluation done annually per chapter 10. Part of the evaluations, like I said, they're estimates, right? So with estimates come assumptions. Troy has a long history of being very conservative in their estimates to make sure that we're able to meet our obligations and to fund these systems properly. Two assumptions that have significance in the valuation are rate of return assumption. The city uses a rate of return of 6.5%, which is very modest compared to some of the other estimates or assumptions that I've seen out there. Again, the lower the percent, the less funded you would be in one of these valuations and the more the contribution would be. The other is the mortality tables. I see some mortality tables out there from, last one, they were updated with 1980. Well, we adopted the 2014, the most current mortality tables out there that, again, have the life expectancies of our membership. So let's go ahead and look quickly at the numbers. We started back in 2010. This is really after the market adjustment. We went down really from 100% to 95% funded in 2011. As you can see in the lower chart, the opposite of that, then our required contribution significantly went up to around 2.5 million. Again, as we can see, as we've gone through, through 2014, our last valuation, we are now over 100% funded and our contributions have significantly gone down. That's really an attribute to city council being committed to funding the required actuarial costs of this plan and making that money work for the city. Okay? So again, at 2014, we're over 100% funded and our annual required contribution for 2017, because again, they go out a couple of years to let you know what your contribution's going to be so you can budget accordingly, is around 659,000. That's a slight uptick from 2016 and that's directly related to, again, our conservative approach of adopting the new mortality tables. Next, I'd like to talk about our Volunteer Firefighters Incentive Plan. Again, from our 2014, 1231 2014 valuation, we're over 50% funded for this plan and our required contribution for 2017 is going to be about 1,113,000. Now, it should be noted on here that the, back in 2014, the city did adopt a new graduated multiplier rate for our volunteers and that multiplier rate will run from July of 2014 and graduate up through June of 2018. So even with that graduated multiplier rate increasing, we're still over 50% funded. Part of that, as we can see in the lower graph, is that the city made a contribution of an additional $2 million in 2015 to help fund these promises that were made. So that had a significant impact on our percent funded and going forward to getting that, those dollars working for us and to keep our promises to our volunteers. Finally, I will talk about the other post-employment benefit funding progress. This is really our retiree healthcare, and that's kind of an accounting terminology out there, OPEB, but it's really our retiree healthcare out there. And again, we can see that we are making strides to come back from the crash that was 67% funded. We're 61% funded as of our last valuation. And again, our contributions are around 4.6 million. This is a, you know, a significant budget line item to fund this operation, but again, this council has made the commitment to do that and we would expect going forward that we'll increase our percent funded as we go through. Again, the big assumptions in here that make this sensitive are, one, the rate of return was to 6.5%, but even more important is the rise in healthcare cost assumption. And in these valuations, we typically use about a 9% inflation factor that will gradually reduce itself, again, after 20 years, down to about 3.5%. But again, that's a major, and we've seen that in our recent years and several years now of more than double-digit inflation factors. I think our last one for our regular one was for our regular health care is around 8%. So I think we're right there and I think we're funding accordingly and we're in good shape.
Always good to hear we're in good shape. Any questions for Tom from council? Councilman Teetz?
The retiree healthcare and fire incentive programs, do they both reflect the new mortality longevity tables?
The, I have not gotten back the OPEB one yet. That's still, again, this is an estimate from what over the phone they're telling me, we're going to be about 61% funded. So I'm waiting for the final results on that. Those are estimated numbers for the OPEB. And I will let you know as soon as I get the finals back. But I thought I'd include it since we're talking about...
I didn't, I didn't put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine.
I wanted to commend you and commend the city manager and others involved in having the courage to look at what reality is versus it'd be a lot easier to come here and say, "Oh, you know, don't worry about it. We're looking great. Look at those great percentages." And it takes some guts and really happy you guys have that sort of guts because that's what reality is and it's good for the taxpayer. So thank you very much. I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you for the kind words.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. There are no carryover items or public hearings this evening, so we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call on James Savage, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on C1. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yeah, the bike path is an issue that's very dear to my heart because it goes back for many, many years. And in the presentation, I did not see any timeline on this. Now, incidentally, I, when I grew up, I biked to school, I biked to work, I biked to the park, I biked everywhere. It was a form of transportation and I still bike once in a while, but not so much for recreation. I think what I would like to see is where the priority is. Now, I'm really happy that we solved this, these questions as to whether or not we are going to have a bike path. My main concern has been that, I think it's about a quarter mile bike path... My main concern has been that, I think it's about a quarter-mile bike path from the end of Tremblay to Livinoyes, and this, of course, would connect a huge amount of residents to the city center. I'm sure you know that the kind of Town Center Drive, there's lights, and there's a button for a walk sign, and you can stop the traffic and walk over, and there's nowhere to go if it's raining, you're in mud, right? And only a quarter mile or so away, there's a whole big subdivision with kids on bikes, and there really is not a safe way for those kids to get to the commuter center when it's only, it took about a minute, a few minutes, bike ride. So what I would like to see, and as I said, there was no timeline, that that part of the project would be given the first priority because we are talking about people that need to bike, whereas, and the big families don't have the resources to be driving the kids all over. So basically, that's what I want to say. I command the, Mr., with the, and yeah, that's the words.
Mr. Bogansey?
Bogan, Bogansey, right, for getting this through. We need this. I like the idea of recreational biking, but I am more concerned with a safe passage for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. I support your ideas, and I think sooner than later, you're going to see a connection from that subdivision to City Hall and to a park that's going to be right there. Any other comments by staff this evening on this item? And as far as the timeline, Mr. Savage, we've been putting on presentations for the Trails and Pathways, and I think if you go on the city's webpage, I know you're not somebody that uses the computer, but all of that data is available, and if you want a copy of it, I'm sure staff would be happy to make a copy for you. Thank you. Next is regular business, and we have one mayoral appointment this evening, so I would like to appoint Charles Salget for the vacancy on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we appoint Charles Salget for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30/2018. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Salget. I would now like to appoint Timothy Blair and David Haye to the Downtown Development Authority for the terms that expire 9/30/2019. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we appoint Timothy Blair and David Haye to the DDA for the terms that expire 9/30/2019. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Congratulations to Mr. Blair and Mr. Haye. Mayor Protem Campbell isn't here this evening to formally appoint those that he nominated at the last council meeting, so with council's permission, I will not appoint for him the following persons. L. Petrulas, Patrick Flock, to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the terms that expire Barbara Chambers, Lori Huber, Charles Salget, to the Historical District Study Committee for the ad hoc terms. Lori Huber, Rusty Kalsanis, to the Parks and Recreation Board for the terms that expire Robert Huber, to the Traffic Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2016. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we appoint those that I read into the record this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes, and congratulations and thank you to those that have volunteered to be on our committees. There are no nominations by the mayor or city council this evening, so we will move to I3. There is no closed session request. So I4 is an assignment of the Detroit Water and Sewage Department Water Contract and Amendments to Chapter 20. NIC Tim Ershnik, the DPDW Director, moving to the microphone. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Trossper and I are here to give you just a very quick synopsis of this request. Back in August 10th, you had a study session that delved into many of these issues, and we are not going to repeat all of that information, but I do want to kind of lay it out for you that tonight, we're going to be asking for you to move on transferring the water contract from the Detroit Water and Sewer Department to the Great Lakes Water Authority. That will not take effect, if you do have an affirmative vote for that, until that process is complete. So one of the things that we did in our process of looking at this is looked at all the city codes that would be affected, and we will bring back to you, anticipating in December or the January, those codes with changes to the names and the details that is really just cleanup material for this action that we're asking you to take tonight. There is one item that, when we looked at the codes, that we wanted to bring tonight, and that is, in Chapter 20, there's a water turnoff on after-hours fee. And when we looked at that, that's a variable fee. It depended on how many hours the individuals were called in, what their pay rate was, and what activities they were doing. When we talked to residents and the input from them, it was very frustrating that we couldn't tell them an exact figure, and as any of you, if you go and have someone do some work for you, you sure would like to know exactly what you're going to pay and not have a bill come in the mail that's a surprise. So what we're looking at and asking tonight in the Resolution A is for you to approve a flat fee for us so that our employees can, with confidence, talk to the residents when there's after-hours repairs, this includes weekends and holidays, and that they can have confidence in telling the residents what's going to happen and how much it's going to cost them. The only additional fee that they would get is if there's a failure on a residence part in the wintertime to heat a building, and the water meter happens to freeze and break, that's their responsibility, and they would be responsible for that cost also. So what we're looking for in Resolution A is to move from a variable cost to a flat fee on that resolution.
Thank you. So why don't we handle A first? So if someone would like to move that resolution and get it on the table for discussion?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Pennington, we approve Resolution A, which is approving proposed water connection fees, and I'm going to assume that is on the yellow sheet that was placed on our desk with a small correction for spelling this evening. Correct?
Correct.
Discussion by council on that resolution. Tim, just, I assume this is, this is a fee that is close to what the variable rates were before?
Yes, and actually, Paul did all the legwork on that. He went through and looked at some of our historical bills to residents. He took the rates of the employees that would actually be going out and doing this work, and what we took were those individuals at the lowest level that would be doing that work so that, you know, those averages would not be any greater than what those would be. So yes, Paul did the due diligence to make sure that those costs would be very responsible.
Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll deal with Resolution B, the Assignment Agreement with the City of Detroit and the Great Lakes Water Authority.
As I mentioned, back on August 10th, there was a lot of discussion. We had Bob Daddow and Sue McCormick here to answer questions and to explain really how the new Great Lakes Water Authority, if they are going to stand up, what it would look like, and the benefits to the city of Troy and all southeast Michigan. And there was a couple of critical things that, that the mayor and council were looking for, and one of those was the 4% limitation that is going to be on the budget revenue increases for future years. It does not mean that water rates, sewer rates, will only go up 4% because there's a lot of factors in there, but from year to year, the revenues that they're going to have for increases in their budget will not exceed 4%. So with that being said, you know, there's a lot of activities out there that's going on, and one of the things that they mentioned is that they're looking possibly to take one of the water treatment plants offline. Well, that's huge. So if they're taking something like that offline and they're not going to increase more than 4% their budget request, then you can pretty much expect that those dollars will come off of that and increases will be at that level or below. Number two, that was very important to a lot of people in southeast Michigan, is they want to talk about Detroit's bad debt and who's going to pay that bad debt. And the answer is Detroit is going to pay for Detroit's bad debt. That is not going to be transferred to any of the other communities in southeast Michigan who are also wholesale customers and will be wholesale customers when the Great Lakes Water Authority stands up on its own. Just to that note, the Detroit Water and Sewage Department got some good news from Booties and Fitch, you know, their bond ratings increased, which is great. Part of that was noted because of what's going on and the movement to the Great Lakes Water Authority. And what we're looking for in the future is that the Great Lakes Water Authority will have a credit positive for future outlooks. And so with those two things, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you. So we'd like to move the resolution and get it on the table for discussion. Councilman Gottlieb?
I'd like to move Resolution B, Assignment Agreement with the City of Detroit and the Great Lakes Water Authority as printed.
On the yellow sheet on the table?
On the yellow sheet attached.
There's a small table on that also. Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Teetz that we approve Resolution B, the Assignment Agreement with the City of Detroit and the Great Lakes Water Authority. Is there discussion or questions for Mr. Ershnik? I think you did a good job of the presentation, and I think we're all, we all understand it. Thanks. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again. Thanks for your work. Thank you. I5 is the approval of contract with MDOT for preliminary engineering service for the reconstruction and widening of John R. Long Lake to South Boulevard. Bill Hury, Deputy City Engineer, is with us this evening. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have before you really has two parts. It's regarding the John R. Widening and Reconstruction Project from Long Lake to South Boulevard. The first part is approval of an MDOT contract, which would provide the federal funds for preliminary engineering or design phase. The second part is a third-party agreement between the city of Troy and our consultants, OHM Advisors, who would actually do the design work for us. Give me the Cliff's Notes or the short version first, and what we've found through the, what's called revised environmental assessment, is that the preferred alternative for this John R. project is now a three-lane widening and reconstruction project. Secondly, we've got a new PE phase approved for $900,000. And finally, the construction phase has been delayed till 2017, 2018. And I'll get into a little more detail here now. The John R. project's been on the books since about 2002. Back in 2005, we went through the original environmental assessment and received a finding of no significant impact, which is the Fonzie. We went ahead and moved forward with the design work as well as right-of-way acquisition. Go ahead, hit the fast-forward button to today. We were notified that we needed to do a revised environmental assessment because of the length of time between the original environmental assessment and now. Kind of something new for us. We haven't been caught with this before in the past. We've had lots of projects that have been 10 years or 10 years plus between original design and construction, but it's a process that's in place. The reason behind it is primarily to make sure that projects that move ahead after a length of time, kind of sitting dormant, is that they're still valid projects and still a proper use of federal dollars. Really, the revised EA looks at three things. It's looking at changes in laws or regulations, it's reviewing the purpose and need for the project, and it's also going to summarize public input. So we're nearing the completion of what we call a draft revised EA, and that's going to be provided in a public, or a public meeting with residents here later this fall or early winter, kind of depending on, they're trying to finalize the noise portion of it because that's one section that has revised, been revised pretty significantly from 2002. And again, what we've found so far is that the three-lane cross-section is the appropriate section for the existing and the projected traffic volumes. Those same traffic volumes do not support the five-lane cross-section. And really, this is primarily a result of the downturn in the economy. Traffic volumes fell significantly. Most estimates put it at better than 30%. We've not recovered from that yet. They're growing, but still at a, at a lower rate than what was projected back in '02. About SEMCOG got a projection for us, and what they're using is for the Troy area is about 6.5% over the next 25 years. And then we've also done other projects on north-south routes like Rochester Road, Crooks, and the upcoming work on Dequinder that have helped spread traffic, I guess is a generic term, to move traffic off of John R. to these other roads. And really, what's all this mean? We had a little problem because we were, we were working towards a construction phase anticipated to start this winter. So I worked with our partners at Oakland County Federal Aid Committee, SEMCOG and MDOT, one, to get a new PE phase funded because we needed to, we wanted to use federal dollars to pay for a new design phase because we've already done quite a bit of work on the original design project, and two, trying to work with our partners to move projects around, to take up that money that was going to be used by John R. for the construction this winter. The good news is, we were able to accomplish both. So we did get approved for a $900,000 PE phase, so about $736,000 and some change is going to be federal dollars. The city shares about $163,000. The MDOT agreement itself is written at a $900,000 amount, and really, that's done because it's based on an estimate, and that was based on 6% of $15 million estimated construction phase, so that's... So, that's where the $900,000 came from. And really, what I look at that as is kind of a contingency. OHM's design phase is a little over $700,000, and that's based on a very specific scope of services, and they put their staff and hours together to come up with that cost. In the end, we get billed on what they actually do. So, say that they come in at $600,000, and the MDOT contract is $900,000. That $300,000 doesn't get lost. It goes back to Oakland County Funding Committee and can get dispersed to other projects that are approved for Economic Development Category C funds, like our Rochester Road project in the future. So, it kind of goes back into the kitty for use on other projects. And as far as using it as a contingency, if there was something that comes up, the bridge at Long Lake that originally, when it was scoped, that was back in '02, when we finally billed this, it's going to be about 15 years later. So, we have incorporated some additional work on the bridge into the project, say, God forbid, that the bridge fell down. We have the ability to do some things with the PE phase without trying to go secure additional federal funds, so kind of a safeguard there. So, in the end, what we're looking for is approval of the MDOT contract as well as a third-party agreement so that we can move forward. And the other benefit to this is that we can use this PE phase to pay for the revised EA as we move further down the road. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill from council? Thank you. I know some residents are happy to hear this.
Yeah, and I've talked to, I've talked to a few, and that's, yeah, they liked the idea of the center turn lane and just the one lane in each direction.
Instead of five?
Yes.
Yep. Thanks, Bill. If somebody would like to move the resolution. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-5, approval of contract with MDOT for preliminary engineering service for the reconstruction and widening of John R. Long Lake to South Boulevard, project number 02.203.5 and 02.204.5 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I-5 as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 has been pulled from the agenda packet this evening, so we will not be dealing with I-6. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone on council that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
No.
Did you want to move the resolution with?
I'd like to move the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. K2A is the 2016 city council meeting schedule. I would encourage everyone to look at that, especially Councilman Teetz.
I don't think, I don't think there's enough meetings on there. Maybe six or seven more.
Appreciate your input. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Council comments this evening.
Did we miss?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I think there was someone.
We'll get to that.
Oh, okay. Yes, I did have a comment I wanted to make, an observation. Fire Chief Nelson, his retirement events were Friday, and they presented an opportunity for, something that I noticed that I, I guess I wanted to say publicly, and that is many of the young staff members in City Hall conversing with those who have experience here in a very constructive way. I specifically saw one employee listening intently as Chief Nelson shared some stories and some advice, and she was taking it in. I'm in the working world as well. I'm at that older end of the working staff, working with millennials and young people. And certainly, I can't dictate how staff is run or how people behave from council table, but I can observe and see when something feels right, and that felt very right. I find myself at a stage where I need to be coachable again and learn and be mentored. And all of us, wherever we are in our careers, if we can remain open-minded and be very coachable, and especially look to those that we know unequivocally are skilled and caring and love their work, as Chief Nelson did. And there are many, many, many staff members like that here in City Hall. It goes two ways. Those who've been around a while, don't be quick to say, "Well, we've never done it that way," or "I don't know if I can take that on." Those that are younger, listen and learn from the wisdom that comes from the experience of serving a community that grew by leaps and bounds here over the past decades. There's tremendous experience. You see it tonight with, with the people who presented. Mr. Hoderick always blows me away with all his roads knowledge and how to go after that money. All of you, and the great work that you're doing, listen to the public, listen to one another, and enjoy the process. And that's what I observed, and I wanted to just share that out loud for those that are watching and wondering how things are going. I'm having the same experience with fellow council members. I hope that you can have a sense of how hard we're working together. We may not always agree, but we're working to listen together, and that's what protects our tax dollars and our pocketbooks, is when we do that with excellence. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilman Henderson?
I see David Zusa's out there, so I don't want to steal all of his thunder, but I told him I would mention this. The Scarecrow Glow is Wednesday. It's one of the major fundraisers for the Historic Village. And so, just like to invite everybody, you are going to speak a little bit about that, David?
I think he was intending to.
Okay, good. I just didn't want to let that slip.
I think Mr. Zusa sent us an email asking us to do that, so, or somebody did. Any other comments from council? I'll try to make this quick. I didn't pull J-11 this evening, but I do want to talk about the map that was included in J-11, and it's on the screen right now, and it indicates the roads. Troy Rocks 1 and 2, it indicates the roads that have been worked on in 2012, 13, 14, what's coming up on 15 and possibly 16. And although we didn't vote it in the resolution this evening on J-11, if you notice up in the top right corner, you'll see a blue stripe for South Boulevard from Adams to Crooks.
May or top left?
Or top left, I'm sorry. My opinion is that although that's an important stretch of South Boulevard, from Crooks to John R., in my opinion, is much more in need of repair than, than that section that's been approved by Oakland County and supported by Rochester Hills. So, I know, I've said this before to staff, and I think there is some support from some members of council, that we need to find a way to work on South Boulevard between Crooks and John R. Rochester Road and South Boulevard is embarrassing. It's almost a safety hazard. It's the entrance to the City of Troy from M-59, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention and encourage staff to continue to find a way to, to find funding to do that stretch. In my opinion, it's just more important than doing Adams to Crooks. Mr. Kishnik, I don't know if you wanted to respond to that, or?
No, I, I sent an email to Gary Petrovich, who's from the Road Commission engineer, before this meeting, and he's already responded back that he'll look into this and get back with me. And he also said to help me what were the reasons for the change, and I think we know the reasons for the change, so I've already answered that. So, hopefully, this will be a smooth transition. But the good news, mayor and council, is we have Rochester Hills, Oakland County Road Commission, and the City of Troy all working together saying yes on South Boulevard, which is, which was not easy to begin with. So, now, you know, I think just massaging this and the project limits is something that we'll clearly be talking about. No promises, but clearly, we will be talking about it, and even after whichever stretch is done, you know, we're going to continue on South Boulevard. Because it becomes, after the wattles, and you can see the map, after you, after you see the work that's been done or going to be done, South Boulevard becomes front and center. So, that, that's where we'll be going. And also, in my memo, you would have read, continuing with a strong focus in subdivision, concrete segment replacement, that's, and asphalt, that, that is going to be a big focus when we look at the budget this year.
It's an impressive, it's a very impressive map when you look at it in its totality, and that's a credit to staff and city management for putting, putting our infrastructure as a priority. So, thank you for that. Next is reports. Are there anyone from council wishing to comment on the reports this evening in the packet? Now, we will move to comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, and I will call on David Zusa, who wishes to speak on L-1. Good evening, Dave.
Mayor Slater, good evening. Members of council, good evening. It's clear from, I believe, the discussion this evening that you all work very hard on a lot of issues. Sometimes they're easy, sometimes they're more complex. So, you're probably looking for an opportunity to kick back and relax and put things in perspective. We're on the verge of Halloween season, and Halloween, I think, is a season that everyone enjoys. Decorations, costumes, and certainly, kids love trick-or-treat. But I think we adults deserve a treat as well. This Wednesday evening at the Troy Historic Village, we're going to be having a Scarecrow Glow Party. It's going to go from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it's a way for us to kick off the Halloween season, and it's a fundraiser for the Troy Historic Village as well. I guarantee you, it'll be a fun evening. We will have a strolling dinner on the grounds and in the facilities there at the village, and we will have 12 area restaurants, including Kona Grill. And I had the privilege of being with them this morning on Fox 2 News. So, we have a lot of great food. We also will have beer and wine, and I think we'll have live music as well, some classic rock music. So, we're upping the energy level from last year's event, where we had jazz and bluegrass, to some rock and roll. I also think that you will be able to enjoy the village in a different way. We are transforming it into a magical playland. We probably have the largest red Radio Flyer wagon in the state of Michigan. Stands 10 feet high and 10 feet wide. And we will also have over 30 remarkable scarecrows in the village, and these are scarecrows that were built by village volunteers, businesses, and families in Troy. Tickets are $37.50 in advance, and you have until tomorrow because on the day of the party, they're $50. And you're all fiscally conservative, I realize that, and responsible, so get your tickets early. And if you can't come, buy a ticket and give it to a friend. Give it to someone who maybe hasn't been to the village before to experience this remarkable facility. Tickets can be purchased on our website, troyhistoricvillage.org. It's costume optional, so you can come dressed as you are or be a kid again and dressed in costume. So, it's great food, great time, great music for a great cause. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Are you dressing up this year?
I am. I, to maintain the decorum of this council, I didn't bring the prop that I used this morning on Fox News, so it's on Facebook, I think. The Chamber of Council actually shared that link, and I appreciate the shout-out by Councilman Henderson. I'd love to see you all, all there, and the village is continuing to develop new programs and be viable for this community, and we certainly appreciate the support of all of you individually and collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and I'll see you there.
All right.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment this evening. There is no closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.